As all rise, our committee commission meeting is now open to the German. Honorable Chairman John Gardner for side.
Thank you, Sheriff Cassidy. Welcome everyone to the regular session of Sullivan County Commission Meeting, Thursday, March 20th, two thousand twenty-five. I'd like you remain standing through the end of the Pledge of Allegiance by Sheriff Cassidy, first notification by Commissioner Mings. Commissioner Mings.
Father. Holy Father, you are righteous and you are good and you're perfect and we're not. We just ask that you would just help us tonight to seek your will and to do the best of our ability. We thank you for allowing us to live here. We thank you for allowing us to live in America. Ask that you would be with each one of the leaders here. Ask that you be with the leaders down in Nashville. And I just pray that you would just work in through all of our county business this evening. In Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you, Commissioner Mings. Sheriff Cassidy. Attention, solid plate.
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When the board opens, please report your presence. Has every member reported their presence? Anyone remaining who needs to report their presence? Madam Clerk?
Eighteen present, six absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a forum to march two thousand twenty, March two thousand twenty-five meeting, the Sullivan County Commission is in session. First order, recognize Rhonda Shaven on behalf of the Second Harvest Food Bank. Good to have you with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the commission. I'd like to pass out some information if I may. I wanted to speak with the Sullivan County Commission. I represent the Second Harvest Food Bank of Northeast Tennessee, and I wanted to share with you a few updates that you'll find in the folder. Specifically, the folder on the impact of two thousand twenty-four is very important that I want to share with you. But also, I want to share with you what's on the screen and the importance of what we've been doing over the past several months. Over the past several months, we have distributed nearly three million pounds of food to the six specific counties providing disaster relief and response. I don't have a...thank you. So, I wanted to share with you a little bit about that. We, just to bring everybody up to speed, I've been to the commission many times, but I do want to share with you that we are one of five food banks in Tennessee, and we are one of two hundred of the United States that make up the Feeding America Network. Right now, we're assisting about forty-three thousand individuals each month. That's almost four hundred distribution sites here in Northeast Tennessee, which includes Sullivan County being the largest number of distribution sites that we serve. And you can see that we do emergency food distribution, which I shared with you a little bit about that. I'll go into one more detail on our emergency food distribution. We also provide nutrition education. We work with child hunger programs like the Backpack Program and the Food Box Program through the schools. We're in one hundred and thirty schools in the region, and our senior nutrition program. And then we also work with several programs as far as community collaboration. We can go on to the next slide, please. So you can see now, we'll talk about the emergency food distribution over the past several months. So we were one of the first organizations to really respond to Hurricane Helene. There wasn't any foods or emergency food supply or water that had been delivered to all of the emergency food sites. And we were there first and foremost. And that's something that we're proud of. It's not something that I'm saying to be bragging about. It's, we were there because you equipped us with that resource to be ready for any time of disaster. And we've distributed twenty percent more than our normal in order to meet those needs. And we continue to do that in the especially five affected counties. Right now, we're providing many of those counties, especially in areas like Mumps Cove and Little Germany and Washington County and some of the other counties with even resources of appliances and other things besides food items. So we can go on to the next slide. As far as the, some of the information, we try to measure, what is the food insecurity rate in Sullivan County? What is it in Northeast Tennessee? And we see that food insecurity in Northeast Tennessee has increased twenty-two percent. So we see that the need here in, in our area, has increased and we have not seen it decline in some time. So we see that the number of neighbors has increased from seventy-one thousand to eighty-seven thousand. And then the number of children has increased significantly as well, from thirteen thousand to eighteen thousand just in Northeast Tennessee. And we can increase, we can go ahead and go to the next slide. As far as student funding sources and implementation, we are encouraging those that support us to consider looking at their support, continuing their support. We cannot do the work we do with the fact that we support the communities that support us. So we're asking those that help us and have helped us for many years with continued support to increase the funding, which allows food banks to expand their services and provide more comprehensive aid to help families access more than just food. And we look at that broader support system. We're providing food, but we're also providing other items to help families. And so you can, well, I'm going to go through the slides quickly because I know I don't want to keep everyone. But you can look at the Tennessee data, keep going, overall food insecurity rates. So you can see from two thousand seventeen all the way to two thousand twenty-two, the increased demand for food assistance has been on the rise again. And then you can see for the next slide, child food insecurity rates are have, in two thousand seventeen, they were at their highs of eighteen percent, and they climbed back up in two thousand thirteen to seventeen point nine, and that continues to climb from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five. We anticipate we're going to see greater need. And so, we can just go through these slides very quickly. As far as the numbers, you can see the impact that we've provided and keep going as far as our counties and the sources of support. We can go on through that to the Sullivan County slide. Keep going. Okay. So in Sullivan County, we have twenty-five thousand people that are food insecure in this county alone. And you can see the projected number of people that we project from two thousand seventeen all the way to two thousand twenty-five, that number has been climbing from twelve percent to we project it's going to be twenty percent in two thousand twenty-five, that we're going to see that significant of an increase. And if you see that big number at the bottom of the screen, that's the annual food budget shortfall that we are faced with as an organization to close the gap, to make sure that every individual, those twenty-five thousand people that have reported that they are food insecure, that's what it would take to provide them with enough food to close the gap. And it's four dollars and ten cents to provide a meal. And so I just wanted to come tonight to share with you a little bit about Second Harvest, what we are seeing, what we anticipate. And we just want to ask for your support, your continued support. I know that you have our request that we just submitted, and I know that you will be considering requests from organizations such as ours. And I just wanted to give you an overview of what we've been doing with disaster relief and also what we anticipate as far as the food assistance and food insecurity in this county and throughout Northeast Tennessee. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaven. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Shaven? Anyone at all? Mrs. Shaven, happy, happy you're with us this evening. Feel free to stick around. Somebody might have a question for you after me.
Thank you so much for your attendance. We have many commissioners that volunteer their time, and we appreciate that as well. And I see those smiling faces on those sides. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Sullivan County Regional Health Department Medical Director, Dr. Stephen Naif. You will. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you for having me. I was asked just to bring a brief status update and mini primer on understanding measles for many of those younger that I think have never seen or been exposed to measles. So my job tonight is just to bring you up to date, to bring the status of the latest outbreak that I'm sure you've seen in the national news. So currently, there are about three hundred and twenty-five cases. We suspect that'll be the number tomorrow in fifteen different jurisdictions across the country. That includes Kentucky and Georgia, which are surrounding states to us. To give you reference, last year, the entire year, we had only two hundred and eighty-five cases nationwide of measles. So far, there have been two deaths. So instead of two deaths, some of them, three hundred and twenty-five individuals, that's a significant death rate. One in one thousand children will die with the disease at its onset. A U from pneumonia or encephalitis. One in a thousand will develop an encephalitis that develops two to five years later that is uniformly fatal. So we don't want to see any innocent children dying from a vaccine-revellable disease. The MMR vaccine, measles, Mumps and Rebell vaccine, is ninety-three percent effective at preventing disease with just one dose, and it is ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent effective with two doses. So about the disease, just a quick review of the disease. Measles is an RNA virus. It is housed only in humans. In Tennessee, in the United States, was declared measles-free in two thousand, in the year two thousand. We started the vaccine in nineteen fifty-six with a half million cases of measles per year, and basically brought it essentially down to zero as far as transmitted cases in the United States by two thousand with just vaccine alone. It is airborne and droplet spread and is probably considered one of the most highly infectious diseases known to man. In a world of a hundred unvaccinated, unprotected individuals, ninety will become infected. It remains airborne within the environment for after, up to two hours after a person that is infectious has visited. So once again, vaccine is the best protection. Individuals are contagious four days before to up to four days after the rash develops. The rash typically develops on the forehead, becomes splotchy on the cheeks, moves down the chest, typically spares the palms and soles. Intubation rates are seven to twenty-one days, with the average being fourteen days. It presents with the three Cs, cough, chorison, which means running nose, and conjunctivitis, running eyes, along with high fever, supercurry, has aged. It looks like just the East Tennessee crab that may be running around that we've seen a whole lot of this year. But at day four, five, they typically develop a rash, and that rash is usually diagnostic, along with little papules in the mouth called coughing spots. They are diagnostic of the disease. Rash is typically splotchy. I mentioned beginning on the forehead and those down, spares the palms and soles. Measles is associated with many complications. One of those is ear infections, but also pneumonia. Pneumonia can be rapidly progressively dead from one to a thousand cases, diarrhea, dehydration, oncitus, and in one to a thousand, they give an encephalitis and can cause seizures, coma, brain damage, and even death. There is a rare form of encephalitis that progresses two to five years later that is uniformly fatal called SSPE. You cannot predict who's going to develop SSPE. Risk factors for complications include age less than five, twenty-seven percent of those less than age five require hospitalization. And everyone in here knows how stingy we are now with keeping people in the hospital. You've got to be really sick. Immunocompromised patients, back in the fifties, we didn't have cancer survivors, stem cell survivors, people on biologics with chronic autoimmune disease. They walk among us every day now, and those are at much higher risk of complications. Now, nutrition, pregnancy, pre-existing health conditions such as heart disease or respiratory problems also increase your risk of complications. In pregnancy, can cause low birth weight, premature birth, and stillbirth. So, coming back, prevention, which we have done such a great job in this country. We eradicated it in two thousand. It's a shame that it's coming back. But we can provide vaccine within seventy-two hours of exposure if we know that you are contact. That is very effective at preventing disease. Also, we have immunoglobulin that we can provide, particularly for those who cannot receive vaccine. So those with cancer, those immunocompromised, pregnancy, we can provide immunoglobulin. Individuals must be monitored for twenty-one days for any symptom development. People born before nineteen fifty-seven, I want to cut off, are presumed to be unless they work in the healthcare setting. Persons between nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen sixty-five only got one dose. They really need to get the second dose. That will push the immunity from ninety-three percent to ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. This is one of those diseases that requires emergency notification of the health department because we only have seventy-two hours from a contact who's had exposure to provide vaccine up to six days with immunoglobulin. So, in short, we don't have any measles here in Sullivan County. We don't have any in the state of Tennessee. But fifteen other states are dealing with now Texas and New Mexico are currently in the throes of a major outbreak. There's tons of information. One is our health department website, www.sullivanhealth.org. Another great website is the Tennessee Reportable Disease website. Just scroll down under the alphabet, and you'll see measles. Look it up. It's got everything you would like to know. Or you can go to www.cbc.gov and just look up measles, and they have a wealth of information there. This is not meant to be anything scary, just information and a status update as requested by Mrs. Crossley. And I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. May. Recognize Commissioner Jones.
Dr. May, thank you for coming. Is roseola a form of measles? Roseola is not measles. That's the fifth disease.
Commissioner Harries.
Thank you for that information. Could you speak to the parents in Sullivan County who may have this summer about this vaccine leading to autism?
Okay, this came from a study from Great Britain a number of years ago. Turns out the study was fake. The gentleman has been discredited, his license removed, and is no longer a physician. They have done multiple studies since then. There has not been any association with autism. Had to understand autism is a multi-spectrum disease. We've become much more aware looking at the entire spectrum, and we still do not understand the causes of autism. And in short, there's, that has been quail multiple times. Anti-vaxxers are very good at bringing this old information out, and it is considered now misinformation and needs to be disregarded.
Commissioner Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was a lot of information. Thank you for it. I just want to make sure I heard this correct. If your children have had both vaccinations, it is extremely unlikely that they will contract measles, correct?
That is correct. It is ninety-eight percent effective. Ninety-eight percent of the individuals who have gotten the measles in this outbreak are unvaccinated.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Dr. May, thank you for being here.
Thank you. And if you need me, you're always welcome to give me a call at the health department. I'm available day and night.
Thanks, sir. Before I move on, the public comments...will you say your recognition again? I'm sorry. I thought you were going to say your recognition. Before we move on, the public comment sign-up sheet is in the back. If anybody will come in, simply begin the meeting. We have non-agenda-related public comment and also agenda-related public comments. So if anybody wishes to sign, sign up for either one. Totally fine. Next order is approval of commission meetings on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, resounding hearing, work session meeting on February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Any discussion on the minutes from the previous meetings? Any motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Mings, second by Commissioner Naif. Any discussion on the minutes presented? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the minutes presented. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk?
Eighteen yes, six absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the minutes are approved. Next order is approval of notaries. Madam Clerk, we have a list of notaries. Madam Clerk?
Michael Adams, Ethan Barrett, Mark A. Boggs, Lisa Darling, Merriam-Harman, Ted Condon, Megan Martha Day, Ethan Barless, Ruth Ferguson, Marty Raniel, Gilken, Jesse Greer, Emily H. Heckers, Douglas Warren Herbert, Karen Kay Heard, Eddie Johnson, Katie Joyce, Amber McCall Hendrick, Scott Lanesa, David Lawton, Danielle Mears, Nancy C. McConnell, Ashley B. McDavid, Shantae Leagin, Lynn Miller, Claire Grace Robertson Moore, Pamela B. Hope, Taylor Nicole Rains, Pamela A. Rehart, Cherry Ann Rice, Honey Rogers, Deborah K. Rutledge, Tabitha Trivet, Kimberly Joan Byers, Maggie Jane Wetherly, David L. Webb Jr., Natasha Billlock, Sarah E. Wilson, and Jeffrey G. Williams.
Have you heard the list of notaries? Any discussion on the list as presented? Say now, hand a motion. Motion to approve by Commissioner Mings, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the approval of the notice. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk?
Eighteen yes, eighteen yes, six absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the notaries are approved. Without objection, next order is public comment. We will reset for the purpose of public comment and...he's trying to take you.
I was on with this guy.
Before I begin, is there anybody that wished to sign up that did get a chance to, either agenda-related or non-agenda-related? First order is agenda-related public comment. Recognize Lady Derek. And before, before you, before you begin, each speaker is requested to state their name and address for the clerk's electronic record. Though this is not question, answer, clarifying questions may be permitted. No speaker can transfer or reveal time to another speaker. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes uninterrupted, as asked to direct all comments to the chair of the body and not the members. At the end of the three minutes, I'll let you know and ask you to make your final statements. Recognize Lady Derek.
Yes, so my name is Lady Derek, and I live at six forty-two Trevor Drive in Kingsport. I just wanted to come here today to say thank you guys so much. I'm actually a co-author to HJR one eighty-two, the Nuclear Family Resolution. So I just wanted to come here as a lifelong Sullivan County resident, just to say thank you for your dedicated service, your courage, and just everything that you do for our county and for our region. I know as a young person growing up, and what I do believe is the greatest part of the entire country, I do say that it is very evident that we can see the effects of the opioid crisis, fatherlessness, and just the overall bantering of our Christian values in society. But with your support of HJR one eighty-two, the Nuclear Family Resolution, you guys are really being leaders in this county and in our state to be able to get the state of Tennessee and other counties to pass more offensive, conservative, Christian legislation. And I just want to thank you so much for that. I really do. I thank you as your constituents. I thank you as a daughter and as a sister. I thank you as a future life and mother. And I also just want to thank you, most importantly, as a Christian.
Thank you very much. I just have a quick question. Victoria, Victoria Hunt and Rodney Page, are you going to speak on a specific agenda-related item or general? Did you sign up for a gender-related? Gender-related item? Recognize Victoria Hunt. No, no one signed up for general. I thought I was making sure you were aware of this too.
I have ten else. Yes, I have another one. Thank you, thank you. I'm here to speak on agenda number two.
You will introduce yourself and your address. You will introduce yourself and your address.
Victoria Mills, 4257 Rock Hill Grove, Love City. Okay, so on resolution two, I have some questions. The biggest thing that bothers me about this is it says impermeability. I know the little girl, but I understand the big words and that's a big word. Also, how would these NPOs be screened? And how long would each of you commissioners get a chance to look into these NPOs before you hand this money over to them? Now, the handout that you have right now, that is Reason Alliance. They are a 501(c)(3). They were formed in 2014 by two men, Douglas Messner and Malcolm Jerry. Now, if you turn it over, it tells you what their statements are. They are all for re-protecting rights, protecting children from abusive schools, mental health advocacy, average school programs. Let's say you go, hey, we passed this resolution, and then you have this one come through wanting money from our county. How many of you would look at that and say, oh, that's really good, we should give them money? So the Douglas Messner that is listed there is also known as Lucian Graves. If in your head you said, yes, I would give this NPO money, you just gave it to the Satanic Temple. So this is also... So this NPO is also a part of the Satanic Temple. Do you not think that they're not already in this area? That flyer was sent to Bristol City Schools, particularly Bristol Middle. And you inadvertently just gave them money, our tax dollar money, thanks to not knowing exactly who you're giving it to. My understanding is my property taxes are going to go up again, just like they do every year again. In the past two years, just mine have gone up $200. Even with Ring Bell, my father's taxes have gone up astronomically. 16 to 25 cents in February is what we do more on everything that we own.
Ms. Hunt, you're attending your three minutes.
And this is what it could go to. But no, I understand what you're trying to do, and I really do, I really do. But you've got to understand, you have to be nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
I'm here to add that 11, 25, I'm so glad we're in Tennessee. I'll be sure to... I have eight, I just wanted to... You guys can bring them up. I would love to see that pass where you can get a little bit more notice as far as what's going to be on our agenda so that the public can keep up with it and not have to come here and look up to this every day. So, good job, hope it passes up. And if it's permission granted, I hope, I would like to say one general thing, the topic agenda-related, kind of do that, take five seconds.
I sense no one has signed up for a general.
So, December 5th of last year, my neighbor contacted me while I was at work, and we had about two acre wildfire across the road from our house. And Fall Branch Wars path in Bloomingdale, Austin, volunteer fire department people down there. And they worked for the better part of the day getting the control. It was along the lake there right across from my house. And so I just wanted to publicly thank them, and I think this is a good way to do that, especially since you guys deal with your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Is there anyone else who wishes to sign up for general public comment? No one did. Without objection, public comment portion of the agenda is posted. Next order, the consent counter. On the consent counter, we have items number four, five, and six. Is there any discussion on the consent counter that one wish to bond an item off? Recognize Commissioner Slavel.
Would you like to move on item four, please, off consent?
Commissioner Slavel moves to remove item number four off the consent counter. Anyone else seek recognition? Commissioner Cross.
Would it be proper to... If this resolution had a number 10 for a copier lease, would it be proper to add that to consent calendar at this point?
We actually can't add one to it. That's where we have one to the consent counter, there are no objections. Is there any objection to item number 10 being placed on the consent counter?
Unless Mr. Aker would like to talk about that.
You read it on. You'll never, you'll never escape that, Commissioner Aker.
Oh, I deserve every bit of that, every single bit of that.
Everybody's known for something. Any objection to item number 10 being placed on the consent counter? Without objection, consent counter is now items five, six, and ten. When the board opens, please cast your vote on the consent counter. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Burke.
Eighteen yes, six absent.
Thank you, Madam Burke. Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the consent counter is approved. Without objection, next order is Old Business, consideration of resolution under Old Business. Recognize Commissioner Harvey on item number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to require an audit of operations observation on park by full commission, Solomon County Commission, every three years. And this is just a future check step, since 30 years is a long time. And this would allow future commissioners to have the opportunity to take a look at this and make that decision going forward.
You've heard the explanation on item number one. Floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner Jones.
Ms. Harvey, why are you choosing one office in this county? To do this to every one of them is audited every year by the comptroller to get an annual audit, and we receive information from that audit if there's an issue. Why are you just picking out one specific department to do this to and obligating our future commissioners to this scrutiny?
Commissioner Harvey.
The reason for that is because of the 30-year lease agreement. And it's just to make sure, when we look back at the past history of what happened here, and really just go back two years and see what huge change had happened, and then go back 10 more years and all the years that it operated in the red, and all the things that are coming up that are scheduled with the grants and the inflation and any other issues with utilities or any kind of infrastructure issues. So it's really just to keep it on the radar screen, make sure there's eyes on it, because it is a huge part of affecting our people in Solomon County.
Well, I think that's why we have the comptroller's office still audited every year of every department and reporting that to the finance director, the mayor, and to... And we get a copy of it for so interested in looking at it. So I don't see the need to... For this action, I guess, everyone votes against it.
Commissioner Aker.
Thank you, Chairman. Same good question, I'll answer it. I think it's a great idea. You're exactly right. You just said something. We have the audit from the comptroller's office if we're so interested in reading it. It is hundreds of pages long. And what we found out, and you were a big help in this in the last couple of years of the problems we had in observation on park. We were woefully behind instituting rules and regulations from TBA that we should have done like 10 years before. We have a park now that I'm very proud of, you know. Three years ago, I would have given it back to anybody who wanted it. And I think we owe it to make sure we're on the right path. I'm for why I sit on observation on park. You know, those meetings are used every day. Some of us just can't make every meeting ever good. And so just to have a little oversight, make you feel better, it's a new area of park, and that makes you feel better. But again, you're exactly right, we do have the comptroller's office. I've actually printed out the audit report in red, as I'm sure you have, because you're very involved. So I don't think it's picking on one department or whatever. But we are doing some great things out there in observation on park. And I hope we never allow it to become what it was just a few years ago. So I'm 100% for this.
Anyone else seek recognition on item number one? Commissioner Harvey? What's your motion?
What's your vote, Congress?
Just for some clarification, this is the same resolution that was ran in February, just then amended. So Commissioner Harvey moves adoption of item number one, requiring on 13 votes for passage. Any objection? You wish to say anything? You wish to say anything? When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number one. Requires 13 votes for passage. Has every... Excuse me. Has every member voted? These resolutions get you on board. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Burke.
Eight yes, 10 no, six absent.
Thank you, Madam Burke. Having failed to receive the necessary majority of the votes for passage, item number one fails. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Harvey on item number two.
Yes, I want to defer this resolution to next month.
Without objection, Commissioner Harvey defers item number two to next month's council.
And I would like to comment that it has included the two suggestions about...
Commissioner Harvey, you already made a motion to give it up. That brings us to the end of Old Business. Without objection, recognize under New Business, Commissioner Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm presenting this on behalf of your student Michael Holthaus that are not here. The Bristol courtroom for the Justice Center of Bristol, the Child Support Courtroom. The speaker says he's so broken and so old, he cannot hear what's happening in that courtroom. We talked about this at the work session. Obviously, if you want to ask any questions about this, but this is something that needs to be addressed fairly quickly hence the waiver of rules. Because if you can't hear what's going on in the courtroom, there could be issues with the cases happening. So if you have any questions, I would ask you directly to him. And I was just looking, since I'm presenting this board, and I'd like to be added as a pen sponsor. Yes, we're seeking waiver of rules.
You've heard the explanation on item number three, sponsor moves waiver of rules for immediate introduction on item number three. Does Kurt Russell wish to address the commission on the resolution?
If they have any questions, I'll reply to any questions.
Anyone seek recognition on item number three? There's no objection. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number three. Requires 16 votes for passage, waiver of rules. I looked at it, I said, who voted no, it was me. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Burke.
Eighteen yes, six absent.
Thank you.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number three is adopted. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Calton on item number four.
This resolution is for approve allocations of books to 409, 500, 530, 30,000 dollars of 30,000 cents from the OBO debate trust fund to two nonprofit organizations. And you can see with the first, now they're four of what the committee, the OBO committee suggested and what meanings we gave to it gives the amount. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
You've heard the explanation on item number four. The floor is open for discussion. Anyone seek recognition? Recognize Commissioner Slavel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So question on the $188,523 going to the sheriff's department, that's allocated for what at the sheriff's department?
I don't have that in front of me, but we did send out an email on this before we gave it to them. Did you read it? They filed out an application just like everyone else, and they qualified for what it takes to get these. And maybe travelers could help us on that. Do you mind, travelers?
I need a... You could. Keep your shirt on.
Yeah, this is only the last minute, three minutes at a time. Turn your shirt off, if you turn yours off. Mr. Ward.
That request is for an additional patrol person for pre-trials. The reason we ask is we currently help scan, monitor all of our people that they send to facilities. As of today, I think there's about 21 out there that currently have ankle monitors on that we supervise. So that they have patrol position, vehicle equipment, all those with it, to recoup some of the funding that we spend on ankle monitors, and to do the math. As of today, our cost is about $3,000 a month. So still not even recouping all of the money. But that's what your request is for.
So it's for staff and ankle monitors, not just ankle monitors.
Correct.
Okay.
What's that, per person?
Yeah, I'm...
I was waiting to go with that one person.
Okay, I had some misinformation, so, thank you, sir.
Anyone else seek recognition? Commissioner Mains and Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Carlton, I'm glad you pulled this off there, because I was looking at the Children's Autism Center receiving $100,000. Will that be yearly, and is that in addition to... I know we're sure some topics about nonprofits cutting them, but is that in addition to the nonprofit segment within the budget for replacing it? Or do you know? No, ma'am, he's just...
No, ma'am. It's just one time payment that they filed out an application that every department that's already is not ongoing. Thank you, it's on that.
Commissioner Weller.
Charlie, that's the question I've got. The $188,523.50, you're saying this is a one-time payment, it's not ongoing. If the Sheriff's Department hires a person to do this, and they're working with ankle monitors, who's going to pay for that next year? Will y'all, will I have to come back and ask again for it?
No, it's just one time, and it'd be, that'd be up to them. I mean, we only give it one time. They fill out an application. We already take this money that we receive for the OPIOR debatement fund, and then it won't be every year, it'll just be up to them. Item Commission Ward, could you answer that, or do you know?
Commissioner Ward, you apply for it yearly, so once it's awarded, it's just a one-time payment. So it's only good for a year. So after that, you could come back if the money's available and apply for it again. But it's only on a yearly basis. So it's not recurring. Can I ask a question?
Well, if you hired Anthony, like you said, to do this, and you've got money invested in him to do the ankle monitor program, that's a lot of money invested just for a one-year program. And then you have to come back next year and ask for it, or you'll have to be adding to the sheriff's budget. He'll have to come back and ask for it. That's a question of the law.
I think that OPIOR money is available for at least the next 15 years. So I don't...
And in this OPIOR money, from what I read on that, we're like $117,000 short on this particular resolution.
That's because the check is about to be received by the next week. So that's $640,000.
Right. So we aren't sure we do have an adequate care for what we need to...
Well, if we want to approve that Children's Equity Center contingent on that check being received this way.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Commissioner Aker.
Thank you. This is my, Mr. Bailey, I just want to make sure, since we're talking numbers here. Because the PDF that was sent out to the email that Charlie was talking about, shows a deficit of $178,932.80 from funds received to funds allocated. And Commissioner Ward was talking about the check. So, so...
I think that is correct.
To that one sent out.
Yeah, it's been on my judging because we don't have all the money in to pay all the appropriate, all the time. But within a period of time, it is supposed to be there.
So, so we feel pretty good.
Right.
Feel good.
About as good as you can feel.
All right.
Commissioner Calhoun.
I'm just asking each of you to support this resolution. Thank you.
No one else seeking recognition? Without objection, when the board opens, please, Commissioner Calhoun, if you were... Is this on later?
Yes.
Commissioner Calhoun moves waiver of rules on item number four, requiring 16 votes for passage. Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number four. 16 votes for passage. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk.
Seventeen yes, one no, six accept.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number four is adopted. That's item seven, correct. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Irisen on item number seven.
Item number seven is really trying to, I wonder if they want to say correct or wrong, but actually trying to go, request it brought to us this last budget cycle. The courts, and they, they, they know the reason it happens because there was one judge that gave a different raise to some of them, there was no case file involved, and it's caused us some issues. So the judges got together as a group and came together to the executive committee, the executive committee formed, the Senate, the Budget Committee. We felt, I was saying, we, some felt that it was too high, and thankful the judges, Judge Conklin was one leading that, got to get a little bit of faith, and they decided, they came with a reasonable compromise. There was a lot of things going on last year. Everybody knows with the school budget, a lot of things going on as a cause of that. This one got kicked to the curb or just overlooked or just dropped. So they've asked us to look at it again. I was asking if Mr. Bailey would be better to do it prior to or at the budget's time. And he said he would prefer to do it now, which I'm great with because I think it'd be wonderful for us to fix it as well. So that's what it is. It's this fixes seven court, seven courts, between all the judges, it fixes six or seven, so it may be six. But it's a grand total of $29,503.44, and that's an angle, but that's, that's where that's at.
You've heard the explanation on item number seven. The floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner Ward.
Thank you. Couple comments. I think the timing on this is horrible. I think that's probably what everybody's thinking. But it's not. This has been, they've been working on this for over a year now. This was brought up before last budget. It's getting them around, issue amongst those office workers now. We tried to fix it last year, it got squashed. Here we are a year later. The county commissioners, their job is when department heads come to us with problems, we fix them. Whether it be Bobby Rousell, Chris Jacob, Scotty Murray, whoever, they've come to us with an issue. So what did we do last year? We kicked, kicked the can, kicked it down the road. Here we are again, still having the same issue. Let's fix this and move on. These, these ladies, these, they're not secretaries, they ought to have a title about that long. They touch every piece of paper that comes through that courtroom. Anything that Judge Conklin or anything they, they deal with, they deal, they touch every piece of it. Some more than others, multiple times. So let's fix this. This is what we're supposed to do. And that was before the budget. This is what Commissioner Bailey wanted to do. Let's keep this down.
Commissioner Irisen.
As much as I would love to ask a waiver of rules, we've got too many people missing. Four of the people that are missing are on as co-sponsors. So due to that, I think I'd better take first reading.
Sponsor moves first reading on item number eight. Please roll to our next, next nominee. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Vanover on item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item eight is resolutions establish the deadline for the resolutions to be filed for the development of the agenda for the work session, or regular commission meeting to provide more clarity as to action to be considered before each commission meeting. Now therefore be resolved that all resolutions, and you can see that the line's been stricken out and amended for our work session, be submitted for the agenda by Monday or noon before each commission meeting for workshops, as well as the regular commission meeting. Be further resolved, the only exceptions to this deadline should be resolutions deemed necessary by the finance director and the purchasing agent to provide timely action of financial matters or by the county attorney as deemed necessary for time-sensitive legal matters. And be further resolved, it should be resolutions submitted after noon on the Monday prior to the Thursday regular session of the Board of Sullivan County Commissioners shall be eligible, shall not be eligible for first reading status until the subsequent month. Of course, that's subject to the above exceptions. This is a resolution to hopefully just to help the commission, to help the commissioners get the information in one time and manner, make better decisions. So this is something I think will help everyone. So I hope everyone can vote in the affirmative. I'd like to ask for a waiver of rules.
You've heard the explanation on item number eight. The floor is open for discussion. Anyone seeking recognition on item number eight? Commissioner Weller.
The name of this bill passed in April of '23, signed into law. And it states, "At least 48 hours prior to a meeting, a local government legislated body shall make available to the public at no change," or excuse me, "no charge, the agenda for upcoming meeting in a place accessible to the public or to the must reasonably describe the matter to be deliberated and acted upon during the public meeting. A local government legislated body may deliberate or act upon matters not based on the agenda if the local government legislated bodies' laws, its bylaws, or improperly adopted rules and procedures that comply with all other applicable state laws." It's already a state law for us to do that. I've been here for six years, living there enough. And I don't know, I'm, I'm going to vote for this, and I hope it holds up. But I, I just don't know how to learn and enforce it.
You're right, Commissioner Weller, it's a state law. Hopefully this, this will just be another tool to help us be able to meet those departments. And I've got some assurances from our departments that we're going to try to hold to this and try to make this work out a little better than it had before. So we're just going to try to make this up better, and all this resolution is all about. So I hope everyone can vote in the affirmative. I'd like to ask for a waiver of rules.
Sponsor moves waiver of rules on item number eight. Anyone else seeking recognition? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number eight, requiring 16 votes for passage, waiver of rules. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk.
Eighteen yes, six accept.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number eight is adopted. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Ward on item number nine.
Thank you, sir. This is a resolution to amend the 2425 general fund budget to approve replacement of gear equipment in Kingsport General Sessions Juvenile Court in the Kingsport Justice Center. Whereas the gear equipment in Sullivan County General Sessions Court slash, or Juvenile Justice Center, Juvenile Court I should say, is outdated and in irony of replacement. We're asking for $27,300.
You've heard the explanation on item number nine. The floor is open for discussion. Anyone seeking recognition? Commissioner Aker.
This is a slow night. Now Travis, what kind of a computer service?
I have no idea.
Well, what's the random, the hard guy?
I have no idea.
Now you don't know on the top, you went through that one, I, I comped your lease, and it just blew all over me. Like you said, if that's what they're asking, we don't need to make any, what they're asking. This is a slow night, we're about nine here, we don't talk.
Anyone else seek recognition on item number nine? Commissioner Ward, buck up your waiver of rules. Sponsor moves waiver of rules on item number nine, requiring 16 votes for passage. Recognize Commissioner Weller.
Thank you, sir. Travis, this says up to $28,000 you want 27 agreed with. Would you take the thunder's help to make sure that that difference can be put back in there?
I'll make sure it gets back. When the board, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number nine, requiring 16 votes for passage. I should have locked that in, I don't think I have that ability to answer that. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk.
Eighteen yes, six accept.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number nine is adopted. And as in the earlier part of the meeting, item number nine is also a decision. Next, next order, announcements. Anyone seeking recognition for announcements? Attorney Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Ward made me think when he was talking about the monitor of the Sheriff's Department. I checked my phone, there's 790 inmates in Sullivan County Jail. I just want to recognize the effort that's been put into reducing that population. About three, four, five, well, I guess back when we funded money to build the jail, we were well over 1,000. We, we got sued in a class action lawsuit. I was very fortunate to resolve that relatively quickly. Thereafter, we met with the General Sessions judges, the DA, the public defender, Sheriff's Department, and continued to need gradually to come up with ways to reduce the population in that jail. Travis, how many do we have on pre-trial at least now?
405.
We have 405 inmates there. But for this effort, we'd be sitting over in the Sullivan County Jail. That would put us at, what, almost 1,200 inmates in the jail. It's been a huge success. Sullivan County and the people I named, the district attorney, the General Sessions judges, law enforcement officers, city of Kingsport, city of Bristol, it's a massive effort to find ways to keep, to reduce the population of the Sullivan County Jail. And as I said, as of right now, we're 790. And that is a big accomplishment. And it avoided, I assure you, lawsuits. And these people should be commended. The reason I bring it up now is when he mentioned the Sheriff's Department of Jail, I checked my phone, and 790. It's been a long time since I saw that first number of being set. Thank you, Attorney Street. Commissioner King. Thank you. Now that Commissioner Vanover got his resolution passed, I just wondered if there, Mr. Bailey, is there any money in the budget that we could purchase Commissioner a sheriff's badge so he could be official, the resolution sheriff?
Let me tell it, let me tell it, quick.
I think, I think they've got some sales in that new jail for two. I think you two would be real good in that. You'd be a good team right there. So I'll do that.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, thank you, Vanover, there.
A little bit more on the serious note, pretty, not goofing off. I think contract was signed this week, Little Devon Fire Department with the baby box. So we're, we're headed in the right direction. Another box has been ordered. So we're excited about that. We all should be pretty excited about that. But if you have to do it about one end in less than a month, they dropped off.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Anyone else seeking recognition for announcements? Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All of us in favor of adjourn? See if I said aye. Ben, adjourn. Thank you all.
I'll need a badge.
I appreciate yous.
I'm just stopping.
I'm just stopping. I'm just stopping.